Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a reminder to please turn off your cellphones and council please speak clearly into the microphone as close as you can get it to it. Uh, let's move on to the approval minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes for the, oh, sorry, roll call, roll call.
Okay. Mayor Bean?
Here.
Counselor Maker?
Here.
Counselor Lindstrom?
Here.
Counselor Penner?
Here.
Counselor Spiesey?
Here.
Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Okay. Approval of minutes, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes for the regular meeting of July twenty-second? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes that's submitted?
Remove.
Here we have motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, moving on to the minutes for the special meeting of July twenty-ninth. Uh, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Remove.
Okay, we have a motion to approve? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Okay, visitors and delegations, we don't have anything there for citizen comments. Citizens are invited to speak to council on any item that does not have a public hearing scheduled. There is a five-minute time limit per person unless otherwise noted by the mayor. Please note that no formal action will be taken on an item that is not on the posted agenda due to the open meeting law provision. However, they may be placed on a future posted agenda if action is required. To better assist you with questions, please submit them in writing to the city clerk and someone from staff will respond. Is there anyone who would like to publicly comment tonight?
Paul.
Hi, welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, my name is Paul Acosta. Um, just kinda wanted to come in and share my input in regards to the siren system that you all are currently working on and making decisions on. So, just a little background of me, um, I have my cellphone on, sorry, just so I have, so I can read my background a little bit better here. Um, I've been, uh, full ranks here with fire service. I've been actively involved in fire service. I retired two years ago from active duty, but I'm on my twenty-six years still working in the fire service, uh, nationwide. Uh, I've been a part of the Colorado State Firefighters Association. I'm part of the National Volunteer Fire Council. I'm also, uh, working with National Fire Protection Association as well, and I was just commissioned last year, uh, by the National Fire Commissioner in Birmingham, Alabama, uh, with the National First Responder Forum. So, I've learned a lot and I've also, um, been an avid storm spotter, storm chaser, as many of you have seen my live stream. Uh, I've been doing that for over twenty-five years and I love doing it. It's still something I've done. It's a big passion that I have. I actually even got my wife now who's my videographer, so it's turned into a family affair, so it's pretty nice. So, um, anyway, that's kinda my background I wanted to have, um, and share with you. Um, just kinda wanted to cover a few things that make sure that everybody understands. That we live here in tornado alley. Of course, we know that. Uh, many of, many don't and don't think that Colorado's part of that. However, we are, and it's a name given to an area in the southern plains of the United States that consistently experiences a high frequency of tornadoes every year. Tornadoes in this region typically happen in late spring and occasionally in the early fall. Strong to violent tornadoes, those of EF three, uh, enhanced Fujita scale, or stronger, uh, are relatively rare and do not typically occur outside the United States. Although the boundary of the tornado alley are debatable, um, it usually runs from central Texas all the way northward up into our area, all the way up into Iowa. So, that's where we get our name. Overall, most tornadoes, seventy-seven percent of them, are considered weak of EF zero and EF one, but of those, they occur within tornado alley. Okay? And it may come to no surprise, Colorado is one of the top in the nation when it comes to tornadoes. We're actually between two counties, well, not between, but pretty close to two counties. The busiest county in the United States that has the most tornadoes reported is Weld County. Weld County, on an average, um, they can add up to about two-hundred-and-sixty-two events and that's quite a bit for them. They haven't experienced that many tornadoes already. Adams County falls second, uh, ranked second in the nation with a hundred-and-seventy-three tornadoes. We're kind of in the middle of those, and that's because we're kind of off of a boundary line that forms off of the Cheyenne Ridge, they call it, and they also have the Palmer, Palmer, uh, Palmer Divide Ridge. And we're kind of in between those guys, and we can see a lot of those. Uh, and they come out here. We've all kind of went under that mysterious myth that brush is by the South Platte will never get hit, and we all know last year, we experienced what, an EF two tornado, three EF two tornadoes that went on the east side of this county, and our airport was one that took, uh, quite a bit of damage. So, I know that you're all considering if we want to get rid of it. So, I did some research and talked a little bit about some of this to the National Weather Service and my friends at the National Volunteer Fire Council. And many meteorologists will tell you that getting rid of sirens, they're, they don't want to see that. That's a big thing they don't want to do. Emergency managers, they'll tell you the same thing. Uh, they're beneficial. Uh, it's proven that they can save up to about ten minutes of warning time. That gives you an additional ten minutes. That's been a known fact from the National Weather Service. Here's a, here's an excerpt from Clayton, Ohio. Clayton, Ohio leaders said newer tornado sirens helped save lives in the residents and the residents in the Memorial Day tornado outbreak of this year in July, uh, excuse me, in May. The tornado sirens on Hope Road on Clayton warned most of the residents along Westbrook Road to take cover as they had an EF four tornado go through with winds of a hundred-and-seventy miles an hour. Their tornado sirens worked. A lot of people worry and go, "Well, what's the liability?" Well, you, you don't really want to weigh the liability, to me, my personal opinion. I think that you want to weigh the lives that we're gonna save. If it saves one life, this siren works. That is more valuable than, sorry, than paying the price of the tornado siren to get repaired or getting updated. So, I think that's a big benefit for us. I think a lot of us don't really realize that we use our sirens improperly in town. That's one thing I've always, uh, when I was fire chief, it drove me nuts that we still don't follow the way we're supposed to use a siren. Um, I don't know if we have a DARA. Do we, may I ask, do we have a DARA here in Brush?
DARA?
A DARA. It's a Designated Emergency Response Authority.
I'd have to ask the chief. Chief, do we have a Designated Emergency Response?
Authority.
Authority.
A DARA.
I believe that was probably me, but I don't know if yes.
Okay, okay.
So, a DARA is a person that, basically, they respond to hazmat calls, um, large incidents, uh, weather events and things like that, and that's something that I would love to see, and I don't know if the city does or not, but I'd love to see us bring that back in. Don Hare, for many of you know, used to be one-five-one. That was his job. He was the Designated Emergency Response Authority.
For the city?
For the city. He used to go out, uh, when there was a tornado warning, Don Hare would go out and he would basically say, "Hey, I'm spotted a tornado," you know, or spotted, you know, watching some rotation, but we never sound that siren until we got the final word from Don Hare. So, I just wanted to share that with you all and see if that's something you would at least consider, so.
Paul, wait, let me interrupt you. Can you say, "We never sounded the alarm"? Who was "we"? Who was responsible for sounding that?
I'm sorry. I, I used to work at dispatch, so I, I call me myself "we", sorry. I apologize. Yes, when I was at dispatch, we'd get the call from Don Hare. He'd say, "Sound the siren if you could," which we could do at dispatch. And we also had a siren button here at the city, city hall, I believe. And I've always wondered why, and even when I was chief, I always wanted to see if we could move that siren over to the fire station, 'cause when guys respond on a weather warning, I mean, we go to the station. We're there. So, you could have your first guys in at the station activate those sirens too, so.
See, and, and I've heard, uh, some fire departments are refusing to for the liability issue as well.
True, true, and, but, you know, I always look at, they can figure that liability, but if you save one life, to me, that's all that matters as a citizen. And that's one thing that I'd like to see us be more, is more educated when it comes to any tornado watches and warnings. Like I said, we don't, we don't use our sirens properly.
Now, the one question, one question I had about it, Paul, when you say you were at dispatch, this is who is telling us now that they're not gonna sign him, sound him after September?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's why I'm thinking if we could, you know, there's so many ways, you know, when I worked with Steven Fonte, when he was, um, with the emergency operations area here in Morgan County, he actually could dial it in on his phone. You could tap it in on your radio. You can activate your radio, you know, our regular handhelds that we could have. You could transmit on a certain frequency. It would trigger that siren on.
Okay.
And, and it would make it work. So, it's just something to think about. I just thought I'd share that with the council.
Well, thank you, Paul, and that, and we do have, we're collecting information that council asked to come back to look at the cost involved in, and so this will come back to council here in the near future.
And I do remember you guys had the fifth graders here. Were, were you here that day, Mr.? And I loved hearing them, 'cause those kids really expressed how they didn't want to lose the siren, because some of them don't carry their cellphones or don't have them. And that's one of the big things that I think that we need to think about too, is our kids here too. Absolutely. When there's a warning going out, then we go right to the station and we've gotta, and then we gotta take trucks out, 'cause we have to stage our trucks out. You wanna pull your vehicles out, 'cause you don't want them if you have a tornado go through town, and all of a sudden now your truck, fire trucks are stuck in the station. So, we'll always go out on that when we do weather spotting.
But, uh, and all the trucks have to go out, is there somebody there?
So, the first one into the station would be the one that would activate your siren. You can easily, yeah, 'cause they've gotta stop the station, get the trucks anyway. So, you could find a way that if you could even have your fire chief or somebody, or even activate on your radio, or your cellphone, you can actually trigger them on your cellphone nowadays. They've become pretty smart technology.
Yeah, I think there are, there are cheaper systems where you can activate manually. If we were to do it, I would, I would say we want something that can be activated remotely.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to be a part of a committee if you want to put something together. I would love to put, put some input into that as well, so I wanted to offer that.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to publicly comment? Okay, moving on to number five. We have a public hearing tonight for a petition by Northeast Cellular, or Colorado Cellular, Inc. for a special use permit for the construction of a fifty-four-foot commercial mobile radio system tower and supporting equipment in a commercial zone located at two-eighteen Hospital Road in Brush. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Tyler, I believe, has a staff report.
Sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Um, the mayor did the partial introduction for me. Within your report is the area location map, which includes the current zoning, the applicant's application that includes a site plan, coverage maps, and a photo simulation of the proposed tower. Consistent with our land use code, notice of this land use application was published in the Fort Morgan Times on July twenty-sixth, and signs were posted on the subject property, and the applicant mailed notices to owners of real property located within three-hundred feet of the subject property. So, the review criteria for a special use permit, um, a use which council finds is essential, essentially desirable to the community, but the indiscriminate allowance of which within a district could cause traffic congestion, noise, and general deleterious effects on the value, safety, or health of the community. Therefore, council considers each special use on an individual basis with emphasis on the conditions of the specific site and its environs, and adequate and sufficient safeguards to lessen the impact of the use. In our land use code, it also speaks about when reviewing a special use permit, council shall consider three things. One, the compatibility of the use with adjacent uses and adjacent zone district as applicable, including the uses potential traffic congestion, noise, lighting, parking requirements, and general deleterious effects on such adjacent uses and properties. Number two, conformance with a comprehensive plan, and three, the applicant's history of zoning compliance within the city, and the intent of the commercial zone, which is where the subject property currently sits, is to provide a district for the location of commercial uses oriented along major thoroughfares. So, for the application, the subject property is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Hospital Road and Edison Street. It's currently used for self-storage units, and the applicant would enter into a lease with the property owner for the use of needed land area within the parcel, which would be at the southwest end of the middle row of the storage units. The surrounding area contains a variety of zoning districts and uses. To the west and northwest is a mobile home, home park. To the north and east is a commercial district, which does include some housing, and to the south is Ebenezer Lutheran Care Center, which is zone residential medium density. The request itself from Northeast Colorado Cellular DBA Viero Wireless is seeking special permitting for the construction of a fifty-four-foot tall commercial mobile radio system monopole-type antenna support structure or tower with no guy wires and supporting equipment. Um, if you have gone through your council packet, you notice the, um, the number fifty-two foot comes up a lot, but on one of the reports, a fifty-four foot was, was
Oh, okay.
used as a measurement, so we just went ahead and picked the, uh, the higher of the two. So, it'd be no more than fifty-four feet. Mounted on the tower initially will be a number of panel antennas and a microwave dish. The height of the tower is necessary to ensure an obstruction-free path for connectivity with an existing Viero tower. The facility would provide valuable infrastructure for the benefit of the residents for Brush and Morgan County. The tower and supporting equipment will be in full operation twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week. There will be secured metal fencing of an approximate ten-foot depth by fifteen-foot width and a six-foot height around the site, and a small unlet sign that will be attached to the north side of the fence to identify the owner. With the continual increasing use of phones, tablets, and other devices, the demand for data continues to mount. In Brush alone, this trend is reaching the critical point for capacity. For Viero, the tower will be a critical link in their four-G broadband network as they continue to enhance performance in their network within the area that lacks reliable service and require an additional four-G capacity, as well as providing essential services to Brush that broaden opportunities for economic growth. Wireless network services provided to the community include telephone, high-speed internet, and enhanced nine-one-one. The unmanned site will not be utilized for retail or wholesale, wholesale purposes and will not require water or sanitation. Electrical service can be provided by Excel Energy and is accessed local, I'm sorry, is, and the access is located nearby on the property. The tower will comply with all Federal Communication Commission guidelines and standards. The proposed location will be accessed from the property's existing access point on Hospital Road. Aside from the construction period, additional vehicle traffic will be minimal. The site will be visited approximately once a month by technicians to ensure the performance of the site. The applicant stated that based on their research, there will be little to no measurable impact on the value of the surrounding properties from the presence of a cellular phone tower. In some instances, the values of the properties have even shown to increase. If necessary, the applicant can provide those studies. To date, no comments have been received by citizens during the review period regarding this proposal. Uh, for the approval criteria review for council, the compatibility, it appears that the addition of a monopole-type CMRS tower will not generate traffic, noise, lighting, parking requirements, or other general deleterious effects on adjacent uses and properties. The second, um, consideration for council is the comprehensive plan, which is, um, these three pieces here. The plan does not specifically address telecommunications, but there are several goals, policies, and strategies that may be considered relevant. The first one is strategy one-point-one-point-two, which is encourage utilizing available land within city limits before expanding city boundaries. Policy three-point-two, support redevelopment within existing city limits, and goal thirteen, which is provide public improvements that are designed and installed to deliver required service in a timely manner. The applicant's compliance history, to date the applicant has made good efforts to comply with city regulations and standards, has made significant investments in the Brush community through the years, and has no history of zoning violations with the city. Our land use code does contain specific criteria for freestanding CMRS facilities that must be addressed. And in your packets, the responses in red, they've been provided by Viero for the criteria, which we'll go through quickly. Foremost, freestanding CMRS facilities will be visually screened from adjacent residential development and public right-of-ways as follows. Number one, all accessory structures and equipment cabinets shall be totally screened from view adjacent property lines, and Viero Wireless will locate its tower and supporting equipment within a fencing that will screen all but the tower itself from adjacent property lines. The northwest portion of the fence, where the access is located, will be chain-linked. Number two, screening landscaping and/or exterior building finishes and colors shall be compatible with the existing character of the site and adjacent properties, and shall be determined as part of the special use review process. There will be no landscaping installed for the screening, and the new shelter area shown in the photo simulation in your package shows that Viero will be utilizing metal material similar to that of the existing building to contrast with the existing building. F, the second part, is the standards for approval for the facility. Number one, existing or approved towers cannot accommodate the telecommunications, telecommunications equipment plan for the proposed tower. There are no existing structures in this area that have height and capacity to facilitate the facility. The need for a new site, uh, is defined in the narrative provided, and it's required to meet the current data loads in the area of town, and that, um, narrative is in, is what we've gone over already, and is also located in your packets. Number two, the tower shall not constitute a hazard to aircraft. Viero has provided a copy of the, um, the tow air determination slash slope test where the tower does not constitute a hazard to aircraft. Three, the tower shall be placed on the property to contain on-site all icefall or debris from tower failure. The tower will be placed on the property to contain all icefall or debris from a possible failure. Number four, the proposed tower shall provide for shared capacity if technically practicable. This tower would not have additional capacity. It would be fully utilized at its, as it is only a wooden utility pole. Number five, the tower shall incorporate the least practicable adverse visual impact on the environment. The site is visually blocked from neighbors to the west, north, and east. From the west side, the site will blend with the surrounding transmission line utility poles. Number six, the proposed tower should not emit radiation that will adversely affect human health. Um, there's, uh, nothing there that will do that. Number seven, the proposed tower shall be the minimum height needed to accommodate the antenna, and the height is the minimum required to be above the trees for the necessary connectivity with the nearest tower that will connect the proposed tower to the Viero network. Requirement number eight is the proposed tower shall comply with all applicable federal and state regulations, and Viero does agree to that standard. Number nine, the, the design of the proposed tower shall ensure structural integrity. The proposed tower shall have adequate measures to discourage unauthorized climbing and to ensure the security thereof. Viero responded that the laminated pole design was designed by the manufacturer as to the specifications of equipment that would be attached. The proposed tower shall have adequate measures to discourage unauthorized climbing and to ensure the security thereof. Number ten, all reasonably possible sites for the tower have been considered, and the proposed site is the most appropriate available site from a land use perspective. Their response was this site was selected due to the combination of its being located within the targeted search area to provide optimal network coverage to this portion of Brush, its current zoning district, which could permit the construction and operation of the facility through the special use process, as well as the necessary space for the facility. And two more, the construction and use of a CMRS facility shall not cause interference to other adjacent CMRS facilities, and the site will meet all FCC guidelines and will not cause such interference. And the last one, such, such facilities which are abandoned by disconnection of power service, equipment removal, or loss of lease for greater than six months shall be removed by the facility owner within thirty days of expiration of such time limit. Viero does agree to that as well. Um, the applicant's compliance history, uh, they have no history of zoning violations with the city, and they've made good faith efforts to comply with all necessary regulations and requirements. So, the, uh, recommendation from staff is should council find that the proposal has met the review criteria, staff recommends that council grant a special use permit for a fifty-four-foot tall monopole CMRS, um, at two-eighteen Hospital Road with the following eight conditions. Number one, the applicant must have a signed lease for use of the land prior to beginning construction. Number two, in the event that construction of the facility is not completed within twelve months of the issuance of the special use permit, the approvals granted in this permit will be deemed repealed. This matter does not need to reappear before the city council for such repeal to be effective. Number three, maximum allowed height of the tower is fifty-four feet excluding the lightning rod. Number four, construction plans must demonstrate compliance with the city standard for this type of structure. Number five, any equipment building must be painted a neutral color approved by the city, which blends with the surrounding area. Number six, signage must, must comply with the city sign code regulations. Number seven, notice of the sale of or change in the operations company must be provided to the city. And number eight, CMRS facilities which are abandoned by disconnection of power service, equipment, removal, or loss of greater than six months shall be, be removed by the facility owner within thirty days of the expiration of such time limit. And to adequately document council's decision, staff will prepare a resolution documenting these findings and all conditions of approval. So, we've now combed through the staff report. Is there any questions?
Okay.
I'd like to ask you a question. Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Um, you had mentioned that they're focusing on four-G technology. Is there a way to perhaps, um, to ask them if they're going to experiment with five-G and that maybe adding an additional condition where Brush could perhaps receive preferential first treatment in receiving that five-G tech, um, in the future?
I've considered that. I haven't spoken that with Viero. Their representative is here tonight, and they can probably just answer that question.
Okay.
Just want to cross you regards to the placement. Is there a reason that it's on building two rather than building three, the larger building, farther away from the highway?
I can't speak exactly to that. I'm sure those discussions happened between the property owner and Viero, and they made that determination for different reasons, so.
Or safety, I'm thinking of safety for the, uh, transmission lines and power lines are closer to building two than they would be to building three?
Okay, sure. So, let the applicant speak to that as well.
Okay, and then, as I think about that, so then what is the width of the thirty-four, how it's thirty-four? Should that tower be knocked over, or does that land, or does that hit, any Ebenezer building?
It, it wouldn't hit Ebenezer. Um, it, where it would land, I'm just visualizing in my mind, if it did come over, which of course would be unlikely, but in the event that it did, it would probably be across
Thirty-four.
Maybe not all of thirty-four, but the majority of it.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, Tyler.
All right.
Okay, at this point, I'll go ahead and allow the applicant to come up. Uh, please give us your name.
Rick Bailey, Viero Wireless. I'm also representing the property owner this evening.
Okay. Okay, do you have any presentation, or you just take questions?
I don't even know how I could stand up to it. They just did, man. That was a mandar there.
Right, he is pretty good. Did council have a question, Dan? Do you
Sure.
address that?
Building three, running out there.
Building, we have microwave issues in staying at the fifty-four feet, and originally it was sought that fifty, the first building would probably be the most likely place. We needed to look back above the tree line to an existing tower and have a finell zone, and they didn't, um, probably check building three. Um, your concern of it falling, typically a structure of this type will, if there were, that F-three tornado came through here, um, the laminate pole would probably break at about, um, a third of the way up. So, there's no way, one, that it's gonna fall on the transmission lines unless it was to fall wholly over, and then it's far enough back that it actually wouldn't hit them. Actually, your, your concern was the transmission line, um, that's running up and down the north side there. Those poles are probably forty-eight feet to fifty-foot too, and they're right next to the right of way. Um, I think your concern of it falling, I, I really don't even think it's gonna get to the curb.
Oh, no, I, I didn't think it was.
Yeah, and this is actually a structured laminate pole, so it's much heavier than the just stick, um, transmission lines that are, um, adjacent to the highway, so I don't think that will be an issue. But, if we get hit with a storm like that, you just never know what's gonna happen. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I was just looking at this, the photo simulation of the placement of it. Looks like it's, you know, would take the transmission lines down to partially bell, or if at all.
I'd have to say the photo simulation is probably, it looks a little taller than it would be, but, you know, it's done electronically. Um, we have, it's the guy who designs our ads, and he did the best he can with what there was. He could use a Google image. I always had a hard time getting a picture in there that would actually work for him.
Oh.
It's kind of hard to get in there.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, there's a Viero pole over near the Thompson Elementary School.
Correct.
And that one's a metal pole, powder coated, looks pretty nice. Um, is there a reason why you're not putting a powder coated, nice-looking pole here versus a wooden pole?
Well, that particular one, um, was in agreement with the school that was made prior to me being there. I think I probably did the hearing on that. Um, in this particular case, the landowner was willing to allow us to deploy, um, this wooden utility pole, which we're doing in specific locations throughout, um, Fort Morgan. Um, one, they're considerably less expensive. Um, they do not have a engineered foundation, um, meaning their specifications, the way that we install it with, um, polecrete and, um, and a caisson and stuff like that, which I'll provide to Tyler here with the building specifications when that permit is submitted. Um, you know, it's pretty low-key.
What, what is the price difference between?
Substantial.
Yeah. Um, what substantial mean?
A lot. I, I, I didn't, I wasn't comparing the two. I would just tell you that that was a very expensive facility for what is housed in it, the one over at the school.
See, I
Yes, it was.
My, my concern is that, uh, and I, I don't know how tall one is over by the school.
I think it's probably in the same neighborhood.
See, and, and, and council did ask that we try to dress the thing up a little bit, and it's in a, a much less conspicuous place than you're talking about, putting this one right next to the highway and as people come into town, so I can understand the cost being substantial, but I would also like to look, look, you know, I don't think you're gonna make it look like a tree. We have Verizon making one make it look like a tree over here, but I, I think it is in a pretty conspicuous area.
I think, you know, when you're going down the highway, you got a pretty narrow window at, um, I think you're at forty-five through there. The only way you're really gonna see it is coming from probably the west going east, in my opinion. Um, and, boy, the visual simulation, the transmission lines are a little more overbearing than that
Yeah.
pole is just gonna blend in. That's partly to consider why that location was chosen, the other was, um, Man, a lot of Netflix users, I mean, yeah, it's that the data is killing us. It isn't the cell phone coverage. It's the data usage that's going on in that neighborhood and Netflix first, YouTube video second, and it's at specific times. You know, we don't want the system to break down and come to an end because your nine-one-one or your phone system occurs over that same data path. So, it's in the middle of the night, wide open. There's lots of spectrum to be able to be utilized and bandwidth right now until people are done watching TV. It's pretty rough.
And that, and I'm
That's all it's for is to
Technically illiterate, but is this pole for cell phone and Viero internet service?
Yes.
Does both things?
Yes, it will.
Okay. The enclosure around it in the description, it says a chain link fence around it. But it looks like has the slats where you can't even see through, is that?
Just on one side over the chain link fence.
Yeah.
The side that you can't see from the road because it's at an angle.
Oh, okay.
So I guess the southwest and southeast will be covered with some type of metal.
Okay, that's, okay, so it's going to look just like it does kind of in
In the visualization is to mask it and make it more, look more like that building.
Right, right.
With the north side where you would literally have to be right next to it for when the police come by to be able to physically look in and see
Okay.
if people are in there dinking around. Just, just, just for safety, there's no climbing pegs or anything like that on this thing. If they want to go service an antenna at the top, they're going to have to come in with a man truck or crane to be able to work on it. So there's no was there a pole climber?
Another question was in regards to the tower. Are you guys going to be putting any type of cameras, weather stations on it? So like, some communities, when you watch the news in the morning, they'll show different communities video of what their highway looks like and they'll say provided by Viero.
Channel four does it all top of Fort Morgan?
I understand that. It's done, it's done in a number of states. Normally those are larger towers. This thing is just a small fill-in capacity and I would, it's going to be transported back through our network via microwave. I don't think they're going to put a camera on that by any means. Those cameras use a lot of data. I mean, we need to have fiber connections to most of those towers. Be able to transport that back and put it onto the internet. That one's probably not it. I don't know if any of the other, I think the one up north of town is on, isn't it? I haven't went through, they expand so many of them anymore. They're all over, and this one up here may be on. There's actually a website. You can go and see all of them. I mean, there are lots of towns and then some locations that are pretty remote. I mean, there's a tower right east of VIA that sits there and looks into the airport.
And did you say that you guys just looked at that building? Was there a potential of moving it further back?
I do not believe that there is purely based on, we wanted to leave enough room for the landowner to be able to have people to come in and circulate around. Building number one didn't really allow that, which was the most ideal. Building two allowed for that and three gets really tight getting around there. As you seen, we were going to put in some protective ballards which would be concreted in steel posts. So, if anyone decides to cut that a little tight, they're not going to hit the screening or get into the facility itself.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, that's right. Stand up there and ask that question so we can capture.
Five G technology hasn't been really identified totally yet. A lot of our equipment is five G compatible. We have a new, I shouldn't let the cat out of the bag because these are trade secrets. But I do know that we have a new switch coming that will put us up and over. A lot of the antennas and stuff, the radios that we have are already there. So, literally you're kind of migrating there already.
Okay.
But five G technology is just about speed. It's not going to go, in rural areas, not going to go further.
Well, the only reason I brought it up, there was a blog post written on the Viero website discussing some of the plans going into the future. And I think the target date you guys, this was like twenty twenty-four, to start rolling out tests.
Right.
I figured if you guys are putting in a new tower now, maybe get us on that list somehow so we can maybe test it here in Brooklyn.
I can assure you, there will be some testing going on because our, one of our RF engineers lives over in that area.
How about that?
There you go. He's probably the big instigator of all of this and a very heavy user.
Great. Keep him around.
He's a very heavy user.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, all right.
But back to, I'm sorry, back to five G tech. This will help with data speeds a lot because with three new sectors in that part of town, it'll take a little burden off from the other stuff that's trying to do
Great.
that same job. So it will help for the goal of five G tech.
Is the tower positioned to enhance everyone in Brush where it's located as far as?
No, small, little areas, all these little poles, the rooftops that we're on
I see.
are all just little pockets, you know, as you know, we're just down the street at the hospital. They're just little pockets where we can redistribute that same spectrum.
Okay.
Increase speeds. When you get into an environment like town with trees and stuff, big towers are not good anymore. The smaller ones, as you noticed outside of town, they're all lowered down, the ones that look into town.
Okay.
Whereas, the other antennas are looking outside of town trying to cover from here to between Akron and
Okay.
Pardon?
How big a pocket does it cover?
Um, this one's about a quarter mile, half a mile at max. Quarter mile's our goal when you've got a lot of data usage. And we're not just picking on Brush. I mean, we're going, having to go back through our entire network and place stuff like this, rooftops, whatever can be available to just break it up and try to meet data usage in this day of internet of things. I mean, people literally can see who's walking up to their door get it on their phone wherever they're at. Or look in your refrigerator and see if you got milk. Crazy if you ask me. All that takes data and I can tell you that biggest usage is our Netflix and YouTube. Netflix is a killer right now.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open it up now to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to publicly comment about this? Okay, I'll go ahead and ask if there are any other council comments?
From staff, just I, I like the idea of a nice pole like the one at the elementary school, like Thompson School or something like that versus a wooden pole. More about the aesthetics and I think over time, those other poles, if we have this XLRG underground fund, eventually be undergrounding some of that in the future anyway. So, I think that might fit a little bit better and paint it what a color you want.
I agree totally. I mean, after a while it's being built by, you know, I mean, you're showing the scene there. I mean, we're not going to notice in the air, which we won't, but you know what I mean?
So no other council members have had any, heard anything, any input or no comments for me? No, I have not either. I mean, I just didn't know what was the difference between this and I know when we tried to put get a tower over by the escape park.
Oh, that one is supposed to be going in over by the cemetery. The only comments I get from the public on that is, when are they going to do it? You know, it's gone from probably fifteen years ago where people were very sensitive to where these things were put. Now, like say data usage and stuff like that, people, people want them and they want improved service and they want faster speeds, I think is, that's what I hear.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I personally haven't heard anything from anybody.
Okay, all right. If there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve or deny the petition. Yeah, motion to approve or deny the petition.
I would move that we approve the petition for Northeast Colorado Salty Peak.
Okay, is that with the eight conditions from your staff?
Yes, with the conditions that were listed. Plus if we can, you know, get more Netflix, that's also good too. If you want to make sure of that. And, and actually, if, if you could put in a good word for a better pole, that would be a terrific.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the eight conditions and a second. Any other council comments? Okay, Andrea, roll call vote please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Lindstrom?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Counselor Bane?
Yes. Okay, moving on to five B, second and final reading of ordinance number eight seventy-eight dash nineteen rezoning certain lands in the city of Brush located in Westwood, second addition, phase two, Morgan County, Colorado, from residential low density to residential medium density to permit the construction of townhomes. This is something the council acted on at our regular council meeting before the special council meeting we had. So I think I have Tyler sign for this.
Yeah, it's essentially as you read it though.
Yeah, right.
The second reading of that itself and making way to ward ultimately what will be the re subdividing of those two, four parcels into six for the construction of those townhomes. So that's still the next step. So we're waiting to get an application on that part of it, but this is making way for that. And council finalizing.
Thank you Tyler. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve or deny on second reading, second and final reading.
We approve ordinance number eight seventy-eight dash nineteen rezoning those lots in the west of Westwood.
Okay, we have a motion approved. We have a second. Discussion. Andrea, roll call vote please.
Counselor Lindstrom?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to finance.
I make a motion to approve city expenditures from July twenty-second through August twelfth of twenty nineteen in the amount of seventy-two-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-three cents.
Have a motion approved. We have a second.
A second.
Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi?
Yes.
Counselor Sherman?
Yes.
Mayor Bane?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Lindstrom?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to six B, two thousand and twenty budget calendar. Joanne?
In your packets this evening, you have the proposed two thousand and twenty budget calendar. It's pretty much status quo compared to last year. I do have it out a little bit later than I had it out last year. My apologies for that. A couple items that I do want to draw your attention to is that in this budget calendar, November the thirteenth is a Wednesday evening and we put the budget retreat there on that Wednesday evening. A second night, if we don't get through on Wednesday, would be the Thursday of the fourteenth. And then we also have set aside in this calendar Saturday, if council decided that they wanted a little bit longer time to go over the budget, we could actually have it set aside for a Saturday as well. The other date that I want to draw your attention to is that by state statute, the county assessor has to present their final changes of the property assessments by December the tenth. The way the calendar falls this year, we will have to approve our budget for two thousand and twenty on December the ninth. In the past, I've, Bob Woolridge has always been good about getting that to us prior to the tenth. But we do have a new assessor this year and this is all new to them, so we may have a little bit of a timing issue there. So if I don't have that information in orders to have a good assessed value and good for our mill levy, we may have to do a second council meeting to approve that, but it does have to be approved before December the fifteenth. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything for staff report? Because you're next.
I do not.
Okay. I want to save you a trip. Okay, moving on to staff reports. Police chief, Derek.
Good evening. Just a few quick updates. We did get a van for Lisa, a community service officer. She's very excited. It's great. It's going to fit the bill. On the weather siren topic, not to beat a dead horse, but I've been reaching out to Bearcom Communication repeatedly. I have not received any response back from them at all, really. I got one email saying we'll talk next week and next week is coming gone and I keep asking.
Okay.
But these, our sirens are all Motorola products, so we have no other vendor to even talk to. It has to go through Bearcom.
Okay.
So, I did speak with the fire chief, the fire department. I don't want to speak for them, but they are far more interested in pursuing some sort of an app or hyperreached notification as opposed to using the weather sirens. I don't, did not get the impression that they're willing to commit to having somebody at the fire station to manually activate them. So, but again, I don't want to coerce them now, but
Okay.
that was my conversation with them. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you chief. Community, or let's see, public works, or no, community development. Tyler?
Right, definitely not the public works director. Infrastructure would be a mess if I was. I guess since Matt brought it up early with just overall some education on the five G aspect of things, it, if you don't know anything about it, just what was, with what was talked about before, when it comes to the amount of data that's being used nowadays because of technology being what it is. One big need that's arising is data centers, places where you can store the data that's being moved from one place to another. For example, when you download a Netflix movie, that, all that information is cached somewhere so that doesn't have to pull from the main source every single time, but they keep it localized to make it quicker to move data from one place to another. And so then industry is looking for places they can use for that. And so, we've been working with Morgan County Economic Development Corporation on possibly utilizing the prison as a source for that. We haven't, there's potentially some leads out there right now, but it could be a good fit for that because it's just a big space where they can put a lot of information, a secured space as well for that sort of thing. So, just something to consider and think about. Pass on, let rumors be what they may, but, but yeah, just something to consider there. Economic development opportunity of some degree.
Capture, license, prison, capture.
Got it. Play on words. Very nice. I'd even, yeah, it was totally unintended, so.
It wasn't lost.
Right. With the building permit, just to let you know, Randy Metlin's been our building inspector for about two months now. He's been doing a great job. I'm getting in the swing of things. It's been a busy summer. We have a lot of permits this overall year, especially with the lamb harvesting facility coming in, there's been a lot of investment in Brush. So, not just them, of course, other commercial properties as well as our residents wanting to improve their properties and new construction, whether it's an addition or brand new homes. So we do see investment happening in Brush, which is of course a very, very positive thing overall. So, if you see Randy telling the job, he's plugging away, things move at a pretty quick pace around here, especially during the summer. So, for someone to jump in and and get in the swing of things like he has, it's been really, really good. So, and then the last one, Colorado Lamb processors, we'd spoken over the last couple of meetings about the reimbursement agreement and the conditions and everything, and they did come by today and make the first payment for a third of their use tax along the way as well as a, it's not an official letter of credit, but a notification from their lender for that. And I'll try to get something a little more official from them, but they are making strides to let council know that they want to do their part and making good on their end, so.
Good.
Tyler, can you inform the council about discussions in regards to what version of building codes that we're looking at going to in the future?
Yeah, so we have been looking into that. I'm going to do a little bit more homework, but right now we're leaning to our council approving, if you see fit, to a two thousand and fifteen building code standard. We're on two thousand and three right now. And so, the idea of doing that is to bring all of our standards up to what's currently being practiced as standards across the industry overall. And as those additions and improvements and changes are made from one addition to the other, because it's done every three years, it's primarily focused around safety, safety as well as just different practices, different techniques, different materials that are being utilized and improved. For example, rebar, now they have a fiberglass rebar that's, from what I understand, is even more what's the right word? More
Better?
I was going to say more better, but yeah. Well, you can't bend it at all. That's one thing about it. But anyway, just as an example of things being changed, they have foam insulated foundation walls. Now you can just lay the rebar in there that insulates it as well as sets everything. That's, uh, set, insulates it as well as sets everything in place, so, just creative ways, and so, um, us updating all of our standards to the two thousand and fifteen, so like I said, I got a couple more calls I'm gonna make. And then with that, both Randy and I are looking at different certifications that tie around some newer diff- newer standards as well, from, uh, building codes to zoning to different things, so we're. In the know.
What im- what impact does moving your building code forward, we're going from two thousand and three, twelve years, what impact does that have on local contractors as far as cost?
Um.
Do we know?
Yeah, that's a good question, the, the exact one, I'm not sure, I've gotten some feedback, I've asked some different contractors their thoughts on that, a lot of it is more so tied, from what I understand, to the commercial end of things and energy standards.
I see.
Because when you adopt the building code, you adopt all the other codes as well, so the mechanical codes, the energy codes, the, um, just all the, everything comes along with it as well. And so, just because of the movement in what people want to see, um, across our civilization, I guess you can say, and our, our western culture, um, those are implemented into a lot of those newer standards.
Okay.
So, there could be more costs on that side of things, and as always, you can make exceptions when you adopt a building code as well. Uh, one that's commonly done, um, and we might recommend, uh, council is, as an example, you can not require, uh, sprinkler systems. Many, many communities have done that because of the overall cost involved, some communities say it's a safety thing, doesn't matter what it costs, you should, you need to implement that regardless, but I know many communities, from what I heard at least, I can't say that.
Have accepted.
Cause I've looked at all of them, have made that as an exception, among many, many other things, so what we'll do is that we'll look through what other communities have done and then look at the code itself, I mean, there's so much in there, of course, to read through it line by line and.
So, you can customize the code for your own?
Correct, yeah.
So, Tyler, is there, there's a two thousand and eighteen code as well?
Correct.
And the reason we wouldn't go to that because it's not been in play long enough to really?
I would say that, Fort Morgan is in the process now, I believe, of moving forth to two thousand and eighteen, but I think they've been pretty current along the way. Whereas, we stopped dead in our tracks a long time ago, so, but the need hasn't always been there either, it hasn't been a big issue overall, some contractors think it's kind of neat that we're still on two thousand and three, um, because of all the standards, for example, when we get like Ebenezer. When they did their blueprints for their, uh, for their addition and all their work, they're already working at two thousand and fifteen or maybe two thousand and eighteen standard, it's just a, a practice for engineers. Across the board, so two thousand and three, it's like nothing for them to, to meet those standards, because if you're up here, then you've already met these standards down here.
Okay, thank you, Tyler.
All right.
Okay, best and brightest, Matt.
Good evening, council, um, the city is hosting its annual summer picnic, uh, for staff at the pool this Friday at, from noon to five, please, all of you are invited. Join us for burgers, brats, hot dogs, chips, dip, salads and dessert, um, and swimming at the pool, uh, we're also gonna have some games, cornhole, and what I've had some contentious debate about ladder golf, but if you know what that is, there's a la- lawn golf? See, I've had three different people tell me three different things now, um, either way, it's a fun game, is the most important thing, so please, you're all invited, hope to see you there, also, if you'd like, bring your family and friends, we should have plenty of food for them, so, um, come on in, close friends. I mean, I'm not gonna say no if you do, but feel free, yeah, as long as it's good stuff, don't bring bad stuff.
If you wanna eat a healthy meal, bring your own.
Oh, I didn't mention, so I said, food is being cooked by chef boss, um.
Oh, that's right.
Please enjoy that.
All right, thank you, Matt, city clerk Andrea.
On your calendar of meetings, um, next Tuesday, August twentieth at one PM, members of council and staff will meet at city hall and travel to Levante View Housing. And I need your RSVP for the September nineteenth CML Fall District meeting, please, I, Mayor Bane is going, but if anybody else wants to go, shoot me an email, email or telephone call.
Good evening, Sterling.
Um, let me. Um, election news, um, I did verify all of our addresses with Morgan County and we held a candidate informational meeting, we had one citizen attend. And he has, um, submitted his nominating petition for Ward one, John Fato. Um, we have one other citizen that's taken out of petition for Ward two, three, but that's all, so we need Ward two in the picture, so if council could get out and talk to people and see if we can get some in- interest. Um, then they can give me a call and I can help them through the process, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, city administrator, Monty.
Okay, a couple items, one, a quick update on the Quiet Zone project, um, you know, we had, had an engineer come out, look at the Quiet Zone and, um, I've got a list or schedule of some of the things that need to happen. First one coming up is the PUC has to come up with their final results on a hearing that they had, they're waiting for the judge to give his, um, determination on what they're gonna do with four quadrant gates. So, once we hear more about that in the next couple of weeks, um, that's a projected date that, I mean, they should get an answer back in two weeks, then I can come back to council and just go the next step with you guys. Um, but remember, I, I think I told you guys that the next step after that would, we bring in that engineer to explain the steps from that point forward, but we just need to understand if those four quadrant gates, if the PUC was going to rule in the favor of continuing with those. And those be the responsibility of the railroad to maintain them at their cost, so that's coming up for the next few weeks. Um, next thing is, on Facebook, I, um, had heard about a few postings in regards to weeds on sidewalks and the city, um, taking care of the weeds. Just a reminder that sidewalks and weeds on sidewalks, those are really property owners' responsibilities, and so, um, I know sometimes in the past, especially along Mill Street and on Hospital. When our crews are going down spraying the weeds out in the gutter or in the street, sometimes they would hit some of the bigger weeds that were on the sidewalk, but, um, that's not normally the way those are handled, it's just when they're spraying, they just hit them at the same time. It still is the property owner's requirement to, uh, maintain weeds on their property, um.
So, Monty, so the property owner on Hospital Road is responsible for those weeds on the side, that overlap onto the sidewalk?
Right, the ones that overlap onto the sidewalks or a lot of the ones I saw on, um, Hospital and Mill Street, they were in the crack between the sidewalk and the curb bed.
They are bad.
Yeah, and so, those are truly the property owner's responsibility, not the city's responsibility on those, um, and like I said, when they're driving down spraying, our guys will sometimes just hit them anyways, but, uh, I saw those complaints on Facebook and, uh, that's the real way to handle it, the, um. Private property owners are responsible for those, now, if it's here around city hall, of course, that's gonna be our property, we gotta maintain all of those, um, we also had some comments about the trees downtown and those little suckers coming up. And so, um, they weren't getting tall, so our crews went out and cut those already and.
What about the weeds downtown, I mean, in the cracks of the sidewalks and is that the business owners?
Yeah, that would. Business property owners.
Yeah, yeah.
Property owners, yeah.
I think there's a misconception that the city takes care of the downtown area sidewalk.
And a couple times a year, the chamber and the city would go out there and do a downtown cleanup and in those situations, I think, a lot of them are taken care of, but it still is a property owner's responsibility. Um, other thing is, I did receive a letter, uh, from the chamber in regards to dilapidated structures or rundown structures in the downtown area and, um. I was gonna say this week, if you're gone, this week, um, following week, I'll get with the mayor and we're gonna kinda go over that list, just so we understand how many different properties are down there. And then, come up with a plan on, uh, with the city attorney, how to address some of those, there are some, uh, rules or codes that we have that we can fall on to require some repairs or fixing of some of those buildings. Um, but we'll, uh, come to council prior to recording meetings, it could get to be a pretty hairy situation, so, that's all I have.
Okay, moving on to mayor and council reports, are there any council reports tonight? Okay, have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned and we'll start our work.